We're ready to go. Thank you for all those who are joining us in our city council meeting. Once again, we're doing this virtual and bear with us as we're trying to figure these things all out. It's been running pretty good, so I think we're doing fine. Just a way of information, the guidelines for this is this meeting is being recorded. The video will be attached to the meeting minutes online in our meeting portal. All participants, if you want to make public comments or we don't have a public hearing today, but if you want to make public comments, you must sign in with your name, just as you were attending the meeting in our council chambers. Those wishing to speak during the public forum or our public care must be viewable to the group. So download the app on your mobile device or use your laptop with the camera. Comments placed in the chat area will be entered into the public record. This area is reserved for those wishing to get in line for public comments. The chat box should not be used like a Facebook forum where personal opinions are logged as people are speaking. So just kind of give you a rundown on that. We need to see you. Got to have your name, just like you were in our council chambers. So and you will have three minutes to speak. So with that, I've asked Councilman Argal to give us our opening prayer.
Our dear Father, Heavenly, whom we gather this day as a council to discuss the needs of this wonderful city, Spanish Fork. And we ask thy Spirit to be with us as we conduct the business of this city, that we may do so mindful of its citizens and the welfare and safety of this community. We are grateful for the many public safety officers, ambulance and fire that serve our city and watch after our cares and our needs. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this city and that we partake of this opportunity to to serve each other. We're grateful for the blessings that gives each one of us and we ask us to keep us safe during this virus that is going about this land, that thou would stay this from us and keep us safe. And we ask and say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I've asked Councilman Scopes to lead us in the
Please rise. Please pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which is in our nation.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is our employee of the quarter and I'm going to turn that over to Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to present the employee of the quarter for the first quarter of 2020. And that is our Public Information Officer and Management Analyst, Scott Ablot. Scott didn't know this was coming, so this is a surprise to him. We had a couple of great write-ups on Scott that I'd like to share. One employee said, Scott is a coworker you just can't help but like. He is helpful, insightful, and knows his stuff. He has a great sense of humor that he uses to put people at ease, which works well as the PIO. I've noticed he gives you his full attention and he's an incredible listener. And then another employee said, it's very obvious how much impact Scott has had on our city. Scott was recently promoted to be the library director and when we posted his position on the job board, we had multiple people and departments who reached out to Human Resources concerned that he was leaving and questioned why he left. Usually after I told them why the job was posted, they were relieved that he will still be employed with Spanish Fork City. For only being with the city for two years, he's had a major impact. Scott has taken a new position and revolutionized it. So Scott's been our first full-time Public Information Officer and started just over two years ago. From handling the publicity for the fires two years ago and now making sure that staff and community are informed concerning the COVID-19 virus. The advancement he has made with the webpage design, social media communications apparel, and just the overall professionalism he brings to Spanish Fork City is amazing. All the department directors and supervisors trust Scott to handle their publicity needs and know the city and their divisions will always be presented in a professional way. I have been able to work with Scott over the last two years and it's been amazing because Seth was doing the public information as the Assistant City Manager and then and then I started doing that a couple of years ago and Scott has just taken and built our public information platform to a level now that the people know it's the information's going to be consistent and it's going to be there when they need it. So with that, Scott, congratulations. We invited Diana, Scott's wife, to be here. Usually we'd invite her and the rest of his family to be at council, but since we're doing this remotely, she's joining us actually from their new home in Spanish Fork. So Diana, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I hope that I did this right and it's usually Scott that's setting all of this up for me. So hopefully it's all set up right. I just wanted to say we're so proud of Scott. I don't think there's a more deserving person. Obviously I'm a little biased, but he's he just works so hard and he regularly talks about how much he loves his job, how much he loves the city. I was kind of teasing him. We so as Tyler said, we recently just bought a home here in Spanish Fork and and our real estate agent was asking us to kind of make a promo video of the of what we loved about the buying process and everything and Scott just couldn't help himself but just boast about the city. Was was all that he wanted to talk about how wonderful Spanish Fork is and nothing about the home buying process, just all about Spanish Fork. So I was just teasing him that he just he can't go over his love for the city and I just we're so proud of him. Our little boys love him. He just is a really hard worker and we're so grateful that that he's ours.
Thanks, Diana. You did. You did awesome. Scott taught you well on how to do this. Thank you. The last thing, Scott, this is a certificate that we'll give to you along with a check for achieving greatness and anyway, just can't thank you enough for all of the good you've done for the city. So thanks, Scott, and thanks, Diana.
Well, thank you. Well deserved. Scott, have you got any words?
Sure. I guess I always need to have some words, right? If I'm the PIO. It's it's been a blessing and a pleasure working with with all of you. This being my second bout with the city. I interned a few years ago and just was thrilled by the prospect of coming back and working with all of you again. And again, it's been a pleasure and much of my success is thanks to you, your support and that you give me in my role and the assistance that you've provided. So this is certainly a team effort as we help communicate with our residents more clearly. And so again, thank you all for your support and help as I try and fulfill that role for our residents. So excited to continue working with you in the new job going forward as the library director. So again, thank you so much. I'm very humbled by this, by this award.
You bet. Well deserved, well deserved. And I'm sure you heard all the applause and screams and yells from everybody around the world, or maybe just our city. So nice job. Okay, let's move to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to address the mayor and the council? I'll give you a few minutes to click on. I know it's a little different. I don't see any. Is that long enough, Brian? Did I give them long enough? So if not, then let's move on to our council comments and let's start with Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything, but I'd just like to express thanks for those of you on this COVID tax task force and keeping us informed and watching out for our city. As we move forward, I know it's probably taking up a lot more time than we would, any of us would like, but just want to say thanks to those and letting the city know that we have a committee that meets a couple of times a week. And their concerns and cares are about our city as we go forward with this. Thank you.
All right, council member Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things to just comment on. First of all, the Miss Spanish Fork Patent will be held virtually this year. It'll be on May 23rd, Saturday night. And because the high schools are closed at this time, it will be held at the Shaloon. Again, it will be virtual and it will be on SF-17. I'm not sure if it'll be live that night or just a couple of days after. And we can watch that, but we appreciate the five contestants that are competing in that patent. And we want to give a big shout out to our current Miss Spanish Fork, Morgan Reed. She has kind of had these last couple of months cut short as so many different people have in their lives right now. And we just have appreciated her service and just want her to know that we love and appreciate her. The next update would just be at the library. The doors are open, limited hours. Right now it'll probably just be for a couple of weeks, but from 2:00 to 4:00, you can go in. They are following all of the CDC requirements, social distancing, and only allowing two family members in at that time. But the library hours and curbside pickup are daily from 10:00 to 6:00 and then that's Monday through Friday. And then on Saturday, noon to 6:00 and you can reserve up to 10 books. Also, the summer reading program is about to start up. That's a fun program to be involved in and you can just hop on the library's website, Facebook page to get those details. But I believe that'll be next week. So make sure you check that out and it's a great opportunity, especially with bombs home with all these kids. This will be a fun program to give them some incentives to read. And then finally, the yesterdays, the mayor, council staff, we're getting a lot of comments about the yesterdays. And we just want to reassure everyone that we are going to be following the direction from the governor. And it's a little bit of a guessing game right now. We don't know when we're going to be in a green zone to have big events. So stay tuned. We will get the word out to everyone as soon as that decision is made. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor, for not forgetting about me this evening. Means a lot.
I made a special note.
Yeah, good. The first thing I have to report is on the State Water Quality Board, we had a meeting week before last, the day after last council meeting and a lot of very fascinating, interesting discussions about can COVID-19 exist in our sewer water? Three of our major universities, BYU, University of Utah, and Utah State are currently doing studies on the wastewater as it comes from the homes into the facilities throughout the state. They want to first of all, make sure that our workers at the wastewater facilities are safe. If and they've eliminated, they they're pretty confident that there is no threat of that, but now they're also testing to see if there's data that we can utilize throughout that. That and many other other interesting things at the water quality level. Things continue to move forward as we continue to discuss options for our also expanding our facility. Garbage, many of you are aware of our 10 dumpsters that are placed throughout five parks in town. So far, we've hauled off 150 dumpsters totaling over 300 tons of garbage. This has not only been made life easier for the residents, hopefully. Well, I know it has as I've seen the lines at the transfer station, but it's also assisted in keeping the transfer station lying down as well as the the contact that they're having there and and we're fortunate that our transfer station is still open to the public, but hopefully the residents have enjoyed this and as it continues just through this week. Fire station is a month ahead of schedule. Happy to report that and that it's $300,000 to $400,000 under budget. So we're grateful for that and the good work that's going on there. Again, encourage people if if you have SF-17 to tune into Channel 16 where you can check the progress of the All Abilities Park and the Fire Station as they're under construction. It's a great technology that our guys are able to to utilize and and show off the project as it goes along. So as well as Center Street, construction continues to go very well. The wicking at the top of Center Street, that's that's moving along and on schedule as well. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Scopes.
Councilman Scopes. Mayor, just one, one meeting to report. We had the South Utah Valley Animal Shelter Meeting, a Zoom meeting earlier today. We approved the the next year's budget. As part of that budget, one thing that was discussed and passed in the meeting. So this is the first that you're hearing of it is there was a motion that had passed discussing that when a hoarding case comes up, that the individual cities are responsible for the control and the sheltering, cleaning, things like that, the shelter fees for the animals up to 25. And then after 25, then the shelter will kind of absorb those costs. What that means is each city basically kind of pays into it. So if if Mapleton, for example, had 100 cats, they would be responsible for paying up to 25. 25 of those, the other 75, all the cities, it would just kind of be leveled out that way and just be absorbed into the costs. And then ultimately Spanish Fork, we get our percentage of that cost. And discussing with the members of the board actually works out well. There aren't a lot of hoarding cases, but when they come, generally they're really pretty big, especially with cats. And that was a way to kind of equalize the fees that would come to our city. And then that way our city would be only be responsible for 25 for 25 cats or for 25 animals and then anything above that, the other the other shelters would help pay for. So that was the biggest thing that came out of it, of improving the budget. That was discussed and passed in the meeting. So another chance to be able to talk to anyone of you about it beforehand. Other than that, no other meetings to report about. The Utah Lake Commission meeting is later this week and we'll report on that next time.
All right, thank you. Councilman Menon Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a few things happening, just like everybody else during this different and a difference, a good word, different time. First of all, Parks and Rec scheduled to have a meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee on Monday and do it virtually like this again, correct Dale? I'm thinking that's correct. But we'll we'll have some some discussion on the Parks and Rec front with our good people that volunteer on that committee and that'll be virtually again, Monday at 5:00. The RAB Tax Committee has met last month, decided on, Dale, you'll have to correct me on the number again, but I think it's around $70,000 in RAB tax funds that were dispersed or awarded to to worthy causes in in the city that deal with recreation, arts, and parks. And so very proud again of that committee taking the time to do good work and sift through those applications and and help those programs along in our in our city, which just makes it a better place to work and live. The golf course, Parks and Rec, I can't forget without bringing up the golf course. Numerous people have made mention to me of how well our course looks right now. There's people from all over the state, not just all over the county, but all over the state that are coming to play the Oaks at Spanish Fork and it is just in beautiful condition. Ryan, Tyler, and and Dallin are just doing a tremendous job in in keeping keeping that course in tip-top shape. I'd like to report that the, you know, the condition of the course made me play better in the Spanish Oaks Open, but that would be a lie. And Brandon knows it. So but the pins were in tough spots, the greens were rolling fast, but everybody had a good time. And and really through this process of that we've been through, they they've just done a great job in welcoming people, taking care of people, but also being responsible to to make sure we're we're doing our part to to slow the spread of the virus. So again, just a shout out to the to the golf course. Driving by the pickleball courts today, also to do with Parks and Rec. I know I've seen Taylor Banks and others out there mowing it, but that berm that goes along the river and the river trail looks like you could play golf on it. I mean, just some of the spots in our city that are kept so so nice just do so much for people, especially at a time where, you know, where we need to get out and just go for a drive sometime and frankly, me get away from the kids and and do it with my with my wife to get away from the kids. Just seeing some of the beauty around our town has really uplifted us. And and so Dale, again, thanks to your department and the whole the whole crews of the city that have that have kept our city beautified during this time because it's it's been something that we've for sure noticed. The Active and Healthy Committee is still discussing items that are on the agenda, you know, about the, everybody's sure liked the the Active and Healthy Fair that's held in June. We'll make some decisions, you know, regarding that coming up. And again, to revert back a little bit to Parks and Rec Committee, again, just just a great job in trying to keep us all informed. I get multiple text messages about updates. What's going on in the swim lessons? What's going on with registration? Different things. Try to keep all of us informed because Spanish Fork citizens know how big of a deal Parks and Rec and and quality of life is to our city. The Chamber of Commerce, I got a note from Heather Yowd, the Director of the Chamber, letting me know a couple of items that they are working on. Obviously, I appreciate them and their leadership, the board, as they've gone through this this time of trying to help businesses, you know, get all the information necessary to apply for government assistance, apply for different different availabilities out there to help them keep keep afloat during this time. They've done a great job. They've played an important role with us as the city, but they've they've represented businesses well. And they've they've also been in touch with with our state and federal delegation as well. So I commend them. The couple of points you wanted me to mention is number one, they're holding a social media contest to promote local business. They've bought gift cards from local businesses to give away as prizes. So make sure if you don't follow the Chamber of Commerce, Spanish Fork Salem Area Chamber of Commerce on social media, that you you do that now so you can you can follow that and and get some some prizes given away from from local companies. They're hoping to have food trucks start on a limited basis, beginning on May 15th. Obviously, just like everything else, that's that's somewhat of of a fluid date, depending on what the government, you know, what the state government lets us know can happen. And then their new networking luncheon that that they will hold on May 20th will be a Zoom event as well. They've had one of those already. I think Councilman Gordon will like this. It's called the POSH event, P-O-S-H event. Pants Optional Social Hour via Zoom, May 20th. So the POSH event. And I thought that landed well. So pants are optional, but we're doing it. We're doing it Zoom. Chamber of Commerce, again, can't say enough about how active they've been in trying to help our our business community here. Rotary meeting, we've held a couple rotary meetings virtually as well and and we're excited when some of the restrictions get lifted so we can be back together as a club again, but it hasn't stopped the good work of the good rotarians to to help out and help lift lift where they're at and and help our community get stronger through this crisis together. Lastly, is the Utah League of Cities and Towns. We've held multiple virtual meetings, you know, per week. I know a lot of you have been on them as well as we've we've listened to the Governor's Office, the the federal delegation as well. I want to pass on a little bit of information from the league and its correlation, its its teamwork with Utah County Mayors specifically. This week, as we've all read in the paper and know, the state has received stimulus money from the federal government that totaled 1.25 billion and that's appropriated on our population basis throughout the state. That money split up into into basically three different tranches. About, Seth, you could help me with the numbers, but about 300 million to Salt Lake County, about 111 million appropriated to Utah County, and then about 240 million left over at the state level to and basically the the design of that is to get it down to local governments, down to cities and towns across the state to be able to help help the, you know, the the expenses that we have related to COVID as a city, but then also be able to help assistance to our local businesses that that maybe had not got, you know, got in for for some of the PPP programs or different government programs already. I just want to take a second and compliment our mayor, not only the mayor's, all the mayors in Utah County, but our mayor as well for being an active participant and leader in that result. Basically, what you had was some some differences of opinion or some vagueness in the Treasury Department of how to disperse those funds and if they were even going to get dispersed to local local government, local cities. But our mayor, along with other mayors, took a a leadership role and in conjunction with the Utah Association of Counties and the Utah League of Cities and Towns. I'm happy to report that they were able to make sure those those funds are going to be dispersed to local communities on an expense basis that as we have COVID-related expenses here in the city. And so I appreciate the the mayor, Mayor Lefson's good leadership on that front to to be active and and help make sure that that we can get as much as many funds as we're allocated from, you know, from the federal government when it comes to these expenses. It it sure plays an important role in what comes down the pike in the next days and weeks ahead that that make it possible for us to, you know, to do some decent budgeting and and then also be able to 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 talk about how to get those funds directly to our local businesses, which obviously are just are just trying to make it. You know, this is 50 days old, about 50 days old. And and if you think about a business, maybe if they're lucky, you can survive 90 days being, you know, nearly no income as a business and paying the expenses. And so we're on an edge here of, you know, 40, 40 days to a month where we need to make sure that we're moving as quickly as we can and efficiently as we can to get the funds where they need to get to, to be able to keep, you know, keep some of these businesses afloat, keep our our city afloat and our budget working good when it comes to to COVID-related expenses. So again, thank you to the to the mayors of Utah County and the league and the Association of Counties and working with the county commissioners to make sure that's understood in a way that we can submit those expenses starting this week and 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 make sure those are taken care of. But again, it wouldn't happen without the good leadership of of our But again, it wouldn't happen without the good leadership of, of our good Mayor Leifson. So I thank him for his time spent there, along with all the other things that he's, he's got on his plate. So that's it, Mayor. That's my list. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The only thing I've got to report is like Mike said, we have been very active in all the aspects of this COVID-19. I'm on the phone call or videos Zoom probably at least three times a week with all the South County mayors, county commissioners, and then we're on our task force as Councilman Argel mentioned. So we're all very active in trying to get through this. What's doing what's best for the citizens of our town and making sure we get our businesses back up and running the way that they should be. And get back to, like I told Seth, I said, I'm missing sitting in a stand with watching a baseball game, watching kids play. That's where I want to get back to. And so if we just keep doing what we're doing, we'll eventually get there. And now that we've gone from red to orange from red, our next step is to go to yellow quicker. And then once we hit yellow, we can get to the green and have somewhat a normal life again. So I just want to thank all those who have been involved in that. And it's made a big difference, believe me. Lot of time, a lot of sacrifice, people's times, and we appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101. Who's handling that?
Well, that would be, that's our management interns. Quentin and Matt will be doing our 101.
Great. Take it away, you two. Got on mute.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. So I'll give a little bit of an intro here while we get our presenter permission so we can share a few slides with you guys. But as, as, as many of you know, Spanish Fork, we administered our first ever resident opinion survey earlier this year. And, and it went really well. We, you should be seeing my screen now, my, the slideshow that we have. But it went really well. We got a good number of responses, good feedback. And we hope to be able to do this every year, or at least fairly regularly, so that we can compare, get a pulse of what the, the citizens have to say about how the city is doing as far as city services go and, and other things, and be able to compare that year over year and take that feedback into consideration. So with that, I'll turn things over to Quentin. Quentin, are you there? You may be having some technical difficulties.
Let me.
I can imagine that.
Go ahead and keep going, Matt. I'll call Quentin.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah. Sorry about that. Okay, so we ended up with a total of 806 responses from, and they were all Spanish Fork citizens. So we're sure that they're people living in the city actually giving their opinions, which is a response rate that we're really happy with. And we got a lot of good data from them. Fifty-seven percent of our respondents were female. The other were, were male. Eighty-four percent live in a house they own. The other percentage rent a house or an apartment. And 60% of those who responded commute outside of Spanish Fork for work. Those are some examples. We, we collected some demographic statistics so that we could see if there are any differences between, you know, different types of people with different demographic characteristics.
Someone I have chosen, but it's not working for some reason.
Oh, I just heard Quentin's voice. Maybe not. Okay, I'll carry on. Anyway, another interesting thing we, we collected is the length of time respondents have lived in Spanish Fork. 62% of those have lived in the city for 10 or more years. So you, you can see that distribution there of, of, of the different buckets of how long people have lived in the city.
I'll jump on, Matt.
Okay, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. So we also tracked the different neighborhoods that respondents came from to see if there's any correlation between different attitudes with the services the city provides, depending on where people lived. And thankfully, we didn't see much of a difference there. So most of the people came from the, from the mid and southern end of the cities with a few coming from the north industrial and legacy area. So can you go to the next slide, Matt? Thanks. We also wanted to know the general direction that people felt about what Spanish Fork as a city is doing. And we were really pleased to see that 86% of respondents think that Spanish Fork is doing well and that generally we are going in the general, right, general direction. So we'll be able to use this data from one year to the next to determine, okay, this year did we do as well as in past years? Or are we kind of heading in a direction people may not want us to be heading? And we also used information from other city ser, city, city surveys that we had taken a look at and compared it to Lehigh, for example, which was a comparable city in Utah County as well. And they didn't do as well as us. So hopefully that means that we are doing as well as the numbers seem to express. Next slide, please. We also wanted to know how people felt about living in Spanish Fork and their, their satisfaction with the quality of life that they obtain here. Many citizens said that Spanish Fork is a great place to raise a family with a 4.4 out of 5. We think that's a great score, so family friendly and a great place for children and for people to live out, live out their bliss. We also saw that people generally feel safe in the neighborhoods they live in and in Spanish Fork generally, with a bit of lower scores going into the physical attractiveness of the city and more especially with the businesses that are in the city. So taking those into mind, Spanish Fork going forward is always looking for other businesses to bring into the city. And so we will be looking to see how we can bring more of those businesses that the citizens have expressed desires to see in the city. Next slide, please.
Okay, so the, kind of the meat and the core of our, of our survey and stuff we spent a lot of time looking at is each city service or a selection of city services that the city provides. You can see here that these 25 services that citizens ranked their satisfaction with on a scale of 1 to 5, 1 being low, 5 being high. We ended up with an average satisfaction rate or overall satisfaction with all city services of 4.15, which is, which is a pretty solid score. Kind of interesting, the, the services at the high end of the graph are on the left side there. Garbage collection, police, drinking water, parks and trails are the ones that people are on average most satisfied with. Those also tend to be services that are a little higher profile or that people might be interacting with more often or every day, which we took as a good sign that, that, that some of those services that people are interacting with more frequently are also those that they're more satisfied with. On the low end, we have the services and departments within the city offices of land use and planning and zoning, parking and traffic enforcement, code enforcement and, and the library. So there, there's definitely room, room for improvement across all services, of course. But to get at some of the areas that we can improve, we also collected from those citizens who rated services relatively low. We gave them the opportunity to give some text, some open ended text responses on what they thought about, about the specific service that they had rated low. So this is a lot of text. I, I won't go through all these bullet points in the interest of time and everybody else's interest. But from, from the lowest rated services to the highest, we've listed some of the, the key findings that we found in our analysis of those, of those text responses. Again, starting on the low end with land use, planning and zoning. And this is something we found throughout the survey is that people's number one concern overall seems to be city growth, right? How, how fast is Spanish Fork growing? And how's it handling that growth? Some opposition to high density housing and interest in preserving open space as the city grows and preserving the river bottoms area as well. Trafficking and parking, traffic and parking enforcement. Again, that's an area, traffic congestion, especially on the main roads through town is an area that people expressed a lot of concern, concerns with. Code enforcement, you know, keeping the, 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 the city codes enforced, properties nice, remodel projects up to code and so forth was something that people were, were concerned about. For the library, we received overwhelming feedback that the library is too old and too small. And in, in correlation with that, a lot of feedback that people were glad that we are getting a new library. There was some concern about the cost of the new library and the locations and some of those other decisions revolving around that. But overall, most of the text responses we got seemed to indicate that they're dissatisfied with the current library situation, but satisfied in the direction we're going. Animal control, lots of complaints about lack of enforcement of leash laws and noise ordinances for animals. Sidewalk maintenance, most people expressed that sidewalks are too rough to run a bicycle down or scooter down or skateboard or something like that in, in some areas of town. Some desire for resurfacing of streets, more street lighting throughout town. Recycling, people would seem to prefer more frequent pickups, recycling pickups right now where every other week, of course, people would express a desire to have that be every week. And then concerns that the recycled materials aren't actually being recycled or aren't being recycled properly. Again, more desire for street sweeping, a little bit of dissatisfaction with SFCN. Again, this is not, not everybody responded to this. Those who did have dissatisfaction with these services were, were the comments that we're looking at. Biggest complaint is that SFCN fiber and cable connections might be a little slow or spotty. Some dissatisfaction with the functionality of the stormwater drainage and, and snow removal. City recreation programs, people in general seem to want more variety of programs, especially programs for adults and seniors. And, and also some desire for a rec center like some of the cities in, in Utah County have rec centers. Some people would like one of those as well. Little bit of feedback on the cemetery. We're, we're into the four and above, which is kind of a cutoff for the, the services that were ranked, ranked overall pretty well. A little bit of dissatisfaction with the emergency services response times, some perception that those could be improved to have our police, fire and medical get, respond to emergencies more quickly. And then with, one, one interesting thing that we noticed was with parks and trails, people of course like parks and trails, like to have them. And overall, the, the 4.26 out of 5 that the Parks and Trails service has, it indicates that Spanish Fork people are overall pretty satisfied with Spanish Fork's trails. There is a desire for more trails, of course, and for the trails, the existing trails we have to be better connected and better integrated into, into the city. Especially certain neighborhoods up north, people were a little less satisfied with parks and trails than, than average. And, and we ran some statistical models on that and found that that was a statistically significant difference. And so, you know, department may want to look at some more trails or better trails up north to serve those people in those, those, those areas. So yeah, that's, that's, that's a brief summary of those city services. Like I say, we'll, we'll be taking those seriously, distributing the, the full comments, all of the, every single comment to every department head or office head over each service for, for their review and see if they can get any ideas on how we, how we can continue to improve and try to see some of these scores go up for the next time we administer the survey. So Quentin, over to you.
Thanks. So one of the, a general and broad benchmark that sometimes city government will hold itself to is to see how frequently people will think or contact the city government. And typically, the hope is that they don't have to because the city government will be doing its job and will be taking care of the needs before the citizens see it. And so we were pretty, pretty pleased to see that only one in, one in every three respondents to this survey actually have even contacted city employees to see if, to resolve any issue that they might have seen. And those that did rated the performance and courtesy of employees quite high. And so we're, we're pleased to see that the citizens are happy with their, with their interactions with those who are working to make and maintain Spanish Fork and its services. Next slide, please. We also took a look at recreation specifically to see how, how people's satisfactions were rated with each of the different services. Parks and trails regularly being rated high as Matt already went over a little bit earlier. Fairgrounds being, being one that was rated well. And then the library, pool and golf course steadily getting lower. We are taking a look to see if there's any ways, if there are any ways that we may improve the, the services, especially with the golf course and pool and library being lower. Hopefully, the library is, is raised a lot with the new library that we will be seeing in a few years. And then the golf course as well and pool and fairgrounds, actually, possibly being a little lower because people don't attend those facilities as frequently as they do the parks and trails, for example. Next slide, please. We also wanted to know what the issues that citizens hold as most important to see what we should as a city be addressing so that the citizens are happier. Across every, every age group, every different, every different neighborhood, managing the growth of the city of Spanish Fork and the traffic within, on our streets were regularly ranked highest importance for the issues that we should be addressing. Although we did see that typically older citizens were more concerned with the growth and traffic of the city as well. So that tapered off as people were younger. It was less of a priority for them as opposed to something such as affordable housing. And so we'll be, we'll be looking through these different issues and possibly rotating through them to see if there, when there are other issues that could possibly be more important so that each year or whenever we, however often we administer the survey, we can understand what it is that the citizens want most for, from the city to address and what we can do to help alleviate their lives and uplift them. Yep, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, hey, we sure appreciate the time and effort our two interns have put into putting that survey and collecting all that data. We're always looking to improve, do the things that we need to do to make our city better than it is. So thank you, Matt, Quentin, for your time and effort there.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Seth.
Listening to the report, there's a handful of items in there that kind of peeked in my mind. And, and I think it's a great research, number one, and express that similar things. And I think we, we've got some areas that we have done really well in as a community and other areas that we need to improve. Whether we need to improve the service level or, or improve our communication level. And I can see some, some definite grounds wherein we can improve what we do for the residents of our town. So this, this research that, that has been completed will be a springboard for us to kind of put together some priorities where we can, we can attack, if you will, some of the areas of our deficiencies in the eyes of the public that we serve. And these, this will, this will be a good guide for us. And next year, hopefully, we can do the survey again. And with whatever we've done this year, we can maybe see that needle start to move a little bit. Great research. Thank you, guys.
Good. Thank you. Consent items.
Councilman Gordon, motion to approve the consent items.
A motion by Councilman Gordon. A second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Hey, we'll get it. We'll get it. New business, UDOT 400 North, SR 51 Roundabout. New business, uh, UDOT four hundred North, SR fifty-one Roundabout, co-op agreement.
Okay, uh, back in a, in a time when children used to go to school, we had a pinch point on four hundred North, uh, at Highway fifty-one, uh, where traffic would back up quite a bit. And we have two projects which, uh, are on the horizon that should help with that. Uh, the first one is, is this project, which is a, a roundabout at that intersection to keep traffic flowing through there more continuously. And we have worked out an agreement with UDOT that, uh, if we pay between two hundred thousand and three hundred thousand dollars, they will pay the balance of the cost to, uh, to construct a roundabout there. Our plan is to build it this summer and have it in place in case, uh, school does start up again, uh, in the fall. And this is the agreement for that.
Let's be honest with you. Chris, when school starts?
Uh, it's, yeah, September, so it'll be done by, when school could possibly start.
There you go. That was correction. Any other questions or comments?
He's a little pessimistic. That's what I'm getting. I think this whole virtual meeting's getting to him.
Eesh. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
This is Chad, motion to approve.
Good. Motion by Councilman Argal.
You want me, UDOT four hundred North, SR fifty-one Roundabout, co-op agreement, sorry.
Brandon, second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? There you go. All right, that passes. Um, we've got, uh, four hundred North, SR fifty-one Roundabout, GMP.
Okay, this project will be done with a EMGP contract, which is the design process. And as part of that process, uh, the design gets fine tuned enough that we get a guaranteed maximum price, uh, which came in, uh, just over one point two million dollars, which is a bit under what we estimated it'd be. So it seems to be a good time to, to bid projects right now.
Good. Any questions or comments on that?
Chris, could you highlight what, I didn't catch the number, so I'm, I'm not able to get the percent. Do you have a sense of what percent it came under, under the budgeted amount?
I don't, but I think it was in the one point three to one point four range is what the estimates were.
And, okay.
Um, we're, we're just asking for the, that this guaranteed maximum price.
Hey, Chris, I had one question about traffic being open during construction. Can you address that?
Yeah, so this project will be constructed this, this summer, uh, as, as well as the Center Street project, which has already started construction. And both projects required that, uh, the roadway be partially opened, uh, at all time. So on Center Street, there will always be a lane in, in both directions during construction. On this project with the Roundabouts, a little trickier, but they have to either keep the right turn on the Highway fifty-one open or the through open, uh, at, at all time. So it, there, there will always be a reasonable, uh, detour for the project.
You can go around the Mapleton Way, Brandon. Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Councilmember Beck, I move to accept the fourth North SR fifty-one Roundabout GMP.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck.
Chad, second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 There you go. Any opposed? I was just gonna say, everybody raise your hand, then I can see that you're all agree. Okay, let's move down to our favorite, uh, FY twenty twenty-one tentative budget. Reader's Digest version.
The Reader's Digest version, instead of being a forty-five minute presentation, we'll cut it down by ten percent. So, uh, see, was it forty minutes and thirty seconds? That's pretty good.
Lovely.
All right, Mayor, council members, um, you've been, shared the budget document by our finance director, Kent Clark, emailed that out to everybody today. And you've got that budget file. Um, I want to talk about the things you want me to talk about. I want to talk about the, maybe just the highlights, but if there's anything in specific that you want, want either Kent or I to address, we will gladly do that. This is certainly an interesting time for us to put together a budget. Uh, as, as you go and, and do a budget, you, you calculate your future revenues, at least in part, starting with your previous year's revenues. And, uh, then apply current factors and different things like that and, and you come up with your budget. And, uh, that was all normal until the middle of March. And, uh, when we began going through this COVID slowdown time, uh, the revenue, sales tax revenue became absolutely unpredictable. The, uh, the impact on our various programs and their revenue became absolutely unpredictable. And so we, we began putting, or finalizing rather, the budget with our, basically our eyes closed and, uh, trying to figure out how will the next year be? And one of our biggest challenges for a lot of our data is it takes from two to, uh, three months, or one to two months for our data to come in. And so when we get our sales tax data from the state for April, it's actually for sales that happened during the month of February. So here we are, May fifth, Cinco de Mayo, and we do not have data for any, from any of our COVID month. And so it's, uh, quite an impossible task really to accurately budget when we don't have the real data. So what we put together in the last, uh, couple of months, studying what we can and getting the information from the different sources where we can find reliable looks into what is going on, i- is a, a very different budget than what we discussed together in February at our work session that begins, uh, formally begins our budget process. Almost all of the employees that we discussed have been eliminated from this tentative budget. Uh, many of the general fund projects, if not the all, but one or two of the general fund projects have been eliminated from this budget. For purposes of this discussion, our sales tax revenue, we typically would see a growth of anywhere from five to ten percent in our sales tax right now. That's because of two things. One, the strong economy, actually three things, the strong economy, growth in our city and in the valley, and then specifically the addition of new stores such as Lowe's opening up this year and stores like Hobby Lobby or In-N-Out that will be opening up in the next, within the next six to twelve months. So when we have all of those normal factors, we would expect sales taxes to grow in FY twenty-one, somewhere in the range, uh, of nine point two, you know, to, to nine point two million dollars. We expected that revenues for FY twenty would have ended somewhere around eight point seven million dollars. Uh, last year we landed right around eight million dollars at the end of FY nineteen, so year ending July nineteen. So year ending July nineteen, about eight million dollars, year ending July two thousand twenty, in a couple of months, we expect it to be at eight point seven. Uh, that would have been the number I gave you at the end of, uh, at the end of February. Well, that'd be the number I'd give you today if March and April weren't so different. But with as different as they are, we are, we, we expect that our revenues will probably just come in at about eight million again this year. So flat this year to last year. And then the state is predicting that we could grow at a negative two point five percent over the next year. So that eight million dollars could go down to seven point, uh, seven point six, seven point seven in that one category, or with some of the new stores, maybe it will be flat again. Right now, we're estimating with the addition of stores that will be flat again. Why do I highlight that one circumstance? Well, we are, we were at eight million dollars last year. It could have been, expected to be at around nine point two million at the end of this next year. So we are seeing a decrease in sales tax of roughly one point two million dollars from, uh, where it could have been under normal circumstances. Uh, with that said, we have been able to cut a number of projects and slow down a no- a number of other issues. And, uh, we're presenting to you a balanced budget that has all of the operations maintained, but it does have a few things that are not, such as this tentative budget at this time does not have an increase for employees in the budget. You'll note in the letter that I, that, uh, we have submitted that there is, uh, the possibility as we move forward, if, if our numbers are too conservative, if revenues come in stronger, we can talk about having raises. We recommend considering raises maybe January, February, March, uh, of this next year. As of right now, there is, there aren't funds sufficient to budget and, and, uh, other priorities that we could also put those toward. Uh, and so we are at this moment recommending no increase for, in this budget. This budget does finish a number of capital projects that we have already started, such as the Allabillys Park, that's on track, can be finished in July, um, or early August, but, uh, July. Finishing Station sixty-two, as Councilman Gordon noted, that will be finished in August, early September. And then, uh, another park in the Legacy Farms area is going to be finished in this budget that is funded in large part by money, uh, generated from that development area. So that has a revenue source outside of, you know. I want to highlight a number, well, I won't talk about all of them, but there are many capital projects in our enterprise funds. As our utilities continue to grow services and, uh, they provide and also continue to age. As a city, right, we are more than a hundred and, uh, more than a hundred and fifty years old and some of our infrastructure is not a hundred and fifty years old, but it, it certainly is aging always. And, and so we have a number of projects in each of our utilities and specifically a number of transportation projects. And so you see then, in our capital projects and in our enterprise funds, the capital, the number of dollars spent on capital projects is, is significant. Many of those have revenue sources such as state funds. Uh, specifically, I want to mention one, we will start in this budget, we contemplate starting the sewer treatment plant, uh, project, as well as a sewer trunk line project, both of which are a part of, uh, a bond that we will contemplate issuing here in the next couple of months. We had a parameters resolution on that a couple of meetings ago. And, uh, then the last thing I want to highlight here is the, uh, library and administration building project. We've been discussing that with you for the past, um, three and a half years. And, uh, last year we presented a, a plan to begin the design of a library and, uh, study for the library and, and possible administrative building here to the south of the sober office building that, uh, we typically hold our council meetings in. Uh, the site where there is a Latter Day Saint Chapel today. We have been in the design process, working with, uh, an architectural firm, identify the size and, uh, have now moved into beginning the layout and the ou- outer skins of the building. That design is going very well and, uh, it proceeds on about on, on time for us to begin construction on this library, if we want to, in, in, uh, the spring of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, in this, or last year's budget, we had a slight, uh, property tax increase for two reasons. One, to provide some funding for the fire, uh, Station sixty-two that is under construction and almost completed. And we, uh, held, or we raised the property tax one dollar ninety-five cents, actually, a month on the average home to go toward a future bond payment for a library. That time we discussed a three-year pro- uh, proposal for that to happen. This tentative budget continues that three-year proposal and would be the second of the three years. Um, we will finish the plans near, uh, November, December, January, uh, the next six months or so, eight months or so. And we'll be ready to transition from design to actual bid and construction of the library. Something that we need to discuss and, and consider in the next month, uh, month and a half through this budget, formal bu- budget process is do we want to continue that process as we had planned? With, oh, uh, the slight property tax increase this year, which would be year two of three, and then, uh, have, keep on schedule to do the final adjustment, uh, with the twenty twenty-two budget that we will present a year from now. That would allow us to start construction in the spring of twenty-one and have the building completed by the late spring, early summer of twenty twenty-two. Uh, in my, in the budget letter, we highlighted a couple of reasons why we should consider continuing on that track or some reasons why we should consider not continuing, continuing on that track. With this COVID slowdown, we anticipate and the, uh, our financial analysts are telling us that interest rates are going down. And on a, on a bond that we would take for this library, an administrative building, we could see, uh, rates instead of, a year ago, we were talking about rates at about three and a quarter percent, which are fantastic rates. We could see rates as low as two and three quarters percent, a half percent reduction in rates. On a bond the size of this, we could see a savings of almost one point two million dollars, simply in the interest rate change. As Chris was just identifying with the, uh, Roundabout project, we are beginning to see projects come in under budget, something that we have not seen for several years in a hot economy. Our analysis has told us that, uh, we were grossly underestimating costs more than a year ago when we were considering what it would cost to build a building. And, uh, we talked about twelve to fifteen million dollars being the price tag for such a building. Uh, through our design phase, we, we have found that it could be much, uh, it could be higher, even twenty, twenty-one million dollars to build this. Uh, the one reason to consider actually going forward is we might, well, we are starting to see the prices of construction come down and the residents of Spanish Fork, instead of essentially paying twenty-one million, could see a significant savings in that price. Say instead of twenty-one, it was eighteen or even sixteen. That is not beyond the realm of possibility. Short anecdote here, when Springville City went to construct their library in two thousand and ten, plus remind us a year, their engineer's estimate for that, uh, structure was, uh, or for their city building rather, their engineer's estimate was twenty million dollars. And, uh, that's what they were planning for. When they opened bids, the economy had significantly changed. Just immediately before that, their bids came in half. The construction price for the structure they built was ten million dollars. I don't think we'll get down in half, but if we were able to save, uh, i- i- if we were able to see some, some, uh, reduction in the prices, um, by simple math, my simple math shows that we could, we could save somewhere between four to seven million dollars overall on the project, simply because uh, we were able to take advantage of lower interest rate and uh, increased competitive bidding. And so those are two significant reasons why we would, we would recommend uh, that we continue forward with our ability to uh, build that library. Some reasons maybe to not uh, are if we do want to put off the uh, the property tax increases uh, because of the economy the way it is. Uh, that being said, the proposal to, for the property tax increase is about uh, total of two dollars and fifty-one cents a month on the average. Uh, this budget has a few other uh, rate increases, such as the sewer rate increase and the garbage and recycling rate. And uh, Mayor, with that, I think I've hit the very, very highlights, certainly not everything. Uh, this is the tentative budget. It uh, is given to the mayor and council for, at this time, for you to work with and, and uh, make changes to, adjust priorities, et cetera, continue working with staff to make changes. Uh, it needs to be a- accepted in some form tonight and is simply the tentative budget in preparation for a public hearing that will happen uh, one month from today's council meeting, the first council meeting in June, where we will have a public hearing and then we would anticipate approval of some kind after. And with that, Mayor, council members, any questions that you have for Kent or me or any members of the staff?
Oh, Seth, I have just a couple of quick questions. You um, you mentioned our, our, so no raises for the employees, but you mentioned that what you're thinking of seeing is one million dollars less on the sales tax. Is that what you said? That we're, we're gonna be flat, there's not gonna be an increase?
Correct.
So, okay. So each year that increase, the, that increase that we get on the sales tax, that's dependent on giving this, our employees the raise?
Uh, in, in, in one, in some ways, that growth is in part what enables us to give raises to employees. Uh, there are other revenue sources that are down uh, because of this. And so you take everything together and uh, we, as you look at the budget, you'll notice the general fund is, is decreased by about four million dollars.
Correct.
And so all things combined is why we would go there, is, we, we would recommend at this time.
If, if, if we see, uh, we won't, we'll see March's numbers, eh, or right, March's numbers in May, right? Is that correct? For Southside?
Yep, March and May.
Okay. If they're, okay, uh, uh.
Yeah, it's interesting, Councilman Argal, we, we will, we will approve or have to approve the budget by that second meeting in June, and we will only have one month's worth of data from COVID effect.
Okay.
So the state's comfortable with us and that requirement because it is relatively easy for us to amend our budget. Uh, but that said, it is, it is, you know, a little bit of walking around in the dark because we don't have that information to be too, you know, too spot on.
Absolutely. I think, did not Stacy mention in our, when we had our update that they, the county was trying to look to hopefully get us some numbers a little earlier? Was that true?
The state, yes.
Yeah, they're gonna give us tentative numbers, they said, on May eleventh, and then the final numbers on May twentieth.
And, and if they do that same thing for us with June's numbers, then we might have a peek at what June's numbers, which are really April's numbers, before we fully finalize that budget, but, but that still only gives us really what the impact is on the fiscal year twenty budget. We don't really know yet what to do about FY twenty-one, so uh, you know, there's just, there're just so many unknowns that prudent course, at least for my, my recommendation would be to uh, to slow down a few things and let's make sure we understand the landscape before we commit.
So on, on them capital projects, you have the lift station listed. We're not building the lift station, correct?
So in the capital projects that, that identified there is the lift station in the, in the southwest part of town, Leland area. Um, and yeah, that would be, that would be constructed in, in conjunction with the trunk line that would uh, serve that southwest area and uh, eventually serve a regional area uh, even west of, of the city's current limits today.
But I thought we were not gonna build that lift station because we're gonna build the trunk line on the west side of the freeway. Am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, maybe just slightly. The, the lift station, the lift station is always, it was always a part of that. Um, there is one lift station uh, kind of, I think kitty corner to the Revere building that's out there in the Leland area today. And the force main would go back up that street and then kind of crest the hill kind of by the sugar, the old Sugar Reef Factory. Uh, so that trunk line is in conjunction with a with a lift. There, there is potentially a second lift station that could be built further west on the other side of the freeway. Maybe that's what you're remembering. That would be in several years, if not a few decades.
No. So Chris had proposed a new sewer line that would go over into that area on the west side of the freeway and would eliminate this lift station and this trunk line. We wouldn't need this lift station.
I, I, what you're remembering is the uh, the Fieldstone Spanish Trails Lift Station would be abandoned by this trunk line, but the southwest lift station that Seth was referring to was always an important aspect of.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the last comment, me hauling away the church is looking better and better, is it not, Seth?
Say that again?
Me hauling away the church is looking better.
Yeah. I don't know, I gotta, I, I don't know where it will end up.
That's, that's, that's what I do. Thanks for your time.
All right, any other questions, comments about this? I just wanted to say, uh, I wanna tell Kent and uh, Seth and all the department heads uh, kudos, great job on a tough budget. This probably will be the hardest budget that they've had to put together as long as I can remember with what uh, everything that happened, going from a robust economy to in the gutter. Um, and then have to scramble and, and make adjustments. You know, usually you can make all those adjustments right in the front of, or first of, when you're making budgets. But when you only have a few months left in your budget time, uh, it's very difficult. And I just wanted to tell them how much I appreciate what they've done on this. So uh, it was great. Good job, guys. Um, if there is not any other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Um, this Chad, I'll make a motion to accept FYI twenty twenty-one tentative budget.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Uh, I didn't think this was to be accepted this week. This was just presentation, and then we have the, then we have the vote later in June. Am I misunderstanding something?
It's to, this is to adopt the tentative, it's not to.
Tentative budget.
So it is to be accepted by the council as the tentative budget.
Okay, sorry.
Still looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, got it. Second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Be opposed. All right, thank you. Uh, we need to uh,
Motion to adjourn to RDA.
Thank you. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second, Mike.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve the consent items.
Chad. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
When Councilman Gordon started to make a motion, I had lost, I lost a heartbeat or two because I thought he was moving to uh, adjourn.
Nice job.
You know, he, he just leads with such confidence about that particular motion. And I, I, I heard that tone. Um, the RDA budget is uh, also a part of the budget file that you were emailed by Kent. And uh, not a whole lot to say about the RDA budget, other than the uh, the various RDAs that we have are, that are active, are very productive. Um, I will highlight that one, one RDA in particular, the Kirby Lane RDA, which surrounds the HEDRO, formerly Sapa Plan. That uh, that RDA has closed and has done us a tremendous job. That uh, that RDA has through the last twenty-five years, been very instrumental to uh, building up infrastructure in and around that area. And uh, we were grateful for all of the uh, we, we've been just grateful for all of the work that RDA has done, the funds that have come from that. The revenue will now flow into all, fully into all of the taxing entities such as the school district, Utah County, and to the city's general fund rather than to the RDA. Uh, other RDAs that you'll see in there, the North Industrial Park, uh, that's probably, that is probably our, our next largest RDA, which covers a lot of the main street area and the industrial parts of town near the airport. And uh, that, that budget will have a few projects this year. And uh, we have our eye to use that RDA to do a few projects in addition uh, in the coming year. I will note that the Corona CRA, which is around the Canyon Creek area, continues to be very productive and is a sales tax only uh, CDA, I'm sorry, CRA, uh, where the developer is, is, is a portion of sales tax receipts from within the uh, from within the CDA area. And uh, this budget will be the third year for that. Uh, and uh, heading towards the final five years. And I think that's it, Mayor. The, the RDA budget really is pretty straightforward with some projects and, and we budgeted our ability to do other projects if, if we want to as, as a redevelopment.
Seth?
Yeah.
It is included. RDA is, like Seth said, is in the budget. It's on page fifty-six and fifty-seven of that budget document is the RDA, two pages of it.
Thank you, Kent.
So do we need to accept that separately, or we already accepted that?
No, separate, it's a separate budget, so it needs to have a.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion that we accept a twenty twenty-one tentative RDA budget.
Second, Mike.
Councilmember Beck, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to reconvene, motion to reconvene back to city council meeting.
A motion by Councilman Gordon. Second by Councilman Scowe. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we're back to regular city council meeting. And let's move down to uh, COVID nineteen discussion.
All right, uh, Mayor, this will be just me briefly, and then Dale um, will talk about uh, some of the things that Parks and Recreation have been considering for the last uh, last couple of weeks and uh, going forward. I'm gonna share my screen. And uh, this is a highlight for everybody as we we talk about the impacts of uh, what you're looking at here is a, a big database of numbers that we have been tracking throughout the state and Utah County for the past month, month and a half. Um, as uh, I think somebody mentioned the number of days, this is, we're going into day sixty-one, day is day sixty-one of uh, since Utah had its first COVID case, first of March. Uh, currently, there are five thousand four hundred and forty-nine total cases in the state of Utah and uh, an estimated two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one active cases. When you hear the total, the number of cases announced each day, uh, released every day, that, that number will always only go up. Because once you are a case, you will always be a case, even though you have recovered or um, in, in some cases, you may have passed away. And so that number will always go up, and it actually can be a little bit disheartening because you hear, we still have five thousand four hundred and forty-nine cases. But that number includes all of the cases in March and April cumulative. And so we also are tracking the number of active cases, which by definition from the state and CDC is simply the number of cases in the last twenty-one days. The assumption is that uh, if you were diagnosed twenty-one days ago or three weeks ago, you are better today. So two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one active cases. Um, a total, uh, let's see, the state's running average is right at three point three percent. And uh, if you look back over the last week, week and a half, we are just right at that same percentage, which is really good. That tells you that we are just growing at an incremental pace. It's not exponential. It's never been exponential uh, for the state, except for the first two or three days. Uh, and so we've just done an excellent job in the state. Uh, this is now looking at the state as a whole. Uh, if we look at Utah County, the number of total cases in Utah County is eleven hundred and seventy-one. The number of active cases is eight hundred and thirty-six. Uh, Utah County is growing, uh, the seven-day average, we're growing at a four and a half percent average rate. So we're growing slightly faster than the state itself. That's impacted by uh, well, we've had a few hotspots in the county and uh, that's had an impact on us and and uh, frankly, as I see the activity going around, I, outside and in different places, I wonder what that increased activity will be like, what in, what will that do to our uh, infection rate? And uh, we'll know in the next week or two what the increased activity has done. Uh, probably most important uh, is the number of people in the hospital right now. Total hospitalizations in Utah County is sixty-three. That's a phenomenal number. That is extremely low uh, in comparison to other states that uh, maybe we see in the news, to have only sixty-three people in total in the county go to the hospital. An estimated number of people currently hospitalized, this is estimated, we don't have good numbers on that. Again, that hospitalization number of sixty-three is a cumulative number. And so it will also always go up. But the number of hospitalizations, uh, actual hospitalizations is, is holding steady in the mid-third. Uh, I wanna show or, or tell you as far as south Utah County, um, the numbers I have are a week old, so it's gonna be a little bit oh, uh, outdated. But as of last Thursday, there were one hundred and eighty-five cases uh, in south Utah County. That is Spanish Fork and south. Uh, does not include Springville, does not include Maple. Uh, and with the growth that's happened in the, in the days since then, I imagine that the Utah County south, Spanish Fork south number is probably close to two hundred now. Uh, I wanna show you briefly a look at what a curve looks like. This blue line is the curve for. what a curve looks like. This blue line is the curve for Utah and is the number of active cases, not total cases, but active cases. And everything, if you can see my mouse, everything from my mouse to the left is actual data. And everything from my mouse to the right is predictive data or modeled data. It may happen that way and it may not. For, for instance, two weeks ago, the predictive model expected us to top out at twenty-five hundred active cases. And you can see that we are now predicting as we are, we're above twenty-seven hundred, twenty-eight hundred active cases. Now the predictive model is, is, is just slightly above three thousand. This model is just like every other model. It's just a model where it's anybody's guess. But it gives us a sense of what's going on. This yellow line shows you Utah County. And the number of active cases in Utah County. Of course, compared to the state, there are fewer. But what's interesting about Utah County's number of active cases is it's fairly linear. Just steadily marching upward. And for both of these numbers, we'd like to see it flatten even more in terms of active cases. It is definitely a good number the way it is, certainly better than being exponential growth. But we'd like to have it flatten even more. This red line I'm now showing you is a look at our state's last two weeks of, of increases. That is a very flat line. It shows you that the number of increases is not increasing. You use a word too much there. It really just shows you that we're, our, our growth is steady. And if I recall, it's steady somewhere around that three, three and a half percent growth. And so what does all this mean? It means that coronavirus is still here. It means that it's still growing. But wonderfully, it is not growing at a pace that will, that at this moment be, is difficult for hospitals, difficult for our caregivers to be able to manage. Those that are sick are today able to get good care. Our hospitals have learned over the last sixteen days how to operate more efficiently in this environment, how to deal with circumstances, and they are to be applauded for that. Utah is extremely unique in our success so far. We are very different than most other states. Certainly how we have handled the slowdown, not having a shelter in place order, and how we are coming out of it today. Time will tell as we're in this orange phase, if, if we're doing things well and our hospitalization rates stay low. I think that's probably the most important metric that the governor and his task force are following is our hospitalization. And with that, excuse me, we went to orange on Friday as a state. The governor has told us in different briefings and different settings that as a state, they will begin considering changing designations by region or area about the middle of May. Based on our numbers in Utah County, I don't expect Utah County to transition to yellow or green in the middle of May. If you look at the data for different counties, I'll pull that up right here. You look at Utah County is in this, this red right here. This line is Utah County. And take, take Southwest Utah, for example, that is St. George. St. George has a population that is, you know, the Washington County area and that whole region, actually. It's not just Washington County. Their population is less than Utah County, but they have a significantly higher elderly population. But despite that, something's going really, really well there because they only have one hundred and twenty-one total cases in, in Washington County in that southwest region. It's possible that you could hear the state say, that area is going to go to yellow. And we'll start to see those changes middle of May, end of May, first of June. We'll keep our ear to that. Those changes are very important as Dale will now begin to talk about the impacts of COVID on our recreation programs because of the specific guidelines and directions that we have received from the governor on how orange, yellow, green, or red affect team sports, swimming pools, playgrounds, and other things like that. So Dale, hopefully that's a good enough foundation for you. I will feed the presentation to Scott, who has just simply taken over. Go ahead, Dale.
Thank you. Can, can everybody hear me? Timing is such that the landscape crews pulled in. Been sitting here this whole time. It's been nice and quiet. Landscape crews next door pulled in, so the mowers are going. But if you can hear me, okay, I'll proceed. Let me just say first off, this is our business and we want to get this stuff open as quickly as you do. We, what I want to do, I guess, is give you a report. The mayor and Stacy have been in a task force meeting, so they've heard me over and over again. But I want to make sure you guys know where we're at and then give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have about any of the things that we have going. If you've been on the webpage that Scott is displaying there on your screen, you can kind of get a, this has been a wild ride for us, as you can imagine. We got a lot of stuff going with buildings and facilities and programs. First of all, shutting them down and now trying to open them up again. Just a quick report. We opened up, of course, the pickleball courts and the dog park and some other things this last weekend. We're, we are planning to open the campground sites, the individual campground sites and the RV park this weekend. The facilities that will remain closed are the senior center, playgrounds, of course, pavilion and building rentals and the group campground site. And those are just to stay in compliance with the, the governor's orders and recommendations. Program-wise, we'll talk about the pool in just a second. But you can see the various programs, those are all listed on that webpage according to date when they were originally scheduled to be run. So you can see a lot of red things there that are canceled. If we could kick the can down the road, we did. And we're hanging on as far as we can hang on. There are some things where we have, we have to be able to make a decision on some items. Some of these have passed already. Some were still in discussion. We had some interesting discussions today. Mike and Brandon, you might be interested in this. We, we did, well, we, my guys formed some little mini task force team or some mini focus groups with coaches from baseball and softball. Because we've determined that we, we really need to start the season by the first of June in order to have any kind of season at all. And then it might be a makeshift at that. Our challenge is we got a deadline on the, on the backend on fall because we don't want to, we don't want to interrupt all the fall sports schedule either. So we can only go so far, you know, into August without disrupting our fall schedule. So we had, I had some interesting conversations with some coaches today and I think you'll share their sentiment. They don't care what adjustments we have to make. They don't care if we just play six games. We just want to play baseball. So with baseball, of course, there's, there's, we can't do any team sports has been instructed by the governor until we go to yellow. We don't anticipate that happening right away. There is a lead time that we need to have of a couple of weeks in order to get a league formed and teams formed to give them a, a little bit of time to practice. I still think my recommendation just to go to sandlot ball would work out really well this year. We'll just throw out a ball and put twenty kids on each field and say, no, let's play sandlot. Anyway, we're still working on that. The coaches, because we told them, hey, you've got helmets. You got a lot of shared equipment. It's one thing to social distance and dugouts and put kids behind. We don't, we can do that. We can control that. But you got shared bats and shared helmets and catcher's masks. And this is just to give you a little bit of a flavor of how detailed and the things that we look at in every program and what might need to be, have some adjustments made to it. But we can make modifications. We can have wipeys and clean those things out. There's things we can do. So we're, we're still holding on to that one. It's by, it's, we're hanging by a thread at the moment, but we haven't, we haven't canceled that as of yet. And if we have to, we may do a half a refund or something if we only get a partial season in. So. Let me see. So you guys can look down that list. We've canceled the Spanish Fork Community Theater play in July because the schools are closed. There's just no way you can put a production together like they do without a lot of lead time and practice and stage time. So that's been canceled. Several of the arts things, the, the Youth Arts Festival was canceled the first of June. Of course, anything that has to do with getting in schools has canceled. I did get a letter from the district just this last week stating that they are going to reconsider opening some facilities earlier than we thought, but it's, it's still under advisement and they have not made any decisions on that. Let me see. So our adult softball leagues are ready to begin. We just need to, we just need to get into yellow before we're allowed to move there. I'm not as concerned about those as we are little league. Because they don't share equipment. So let's talk about the pool. If you guys have any questions on any of these, let me know. Some of the things that we are doing, if we can create a controlled environment, then we are moving forward with the program. For instance, the, the pickleball clinic. We can host a pickleball clinic and maintain control and social distancing in that. We can require them to play with the partner that came with them. You know, same with our urban fishing program, except we're going to require a parent to come be there with them so that they can be the hands-on and our advisors can, can instruct and teach. We've limited the class sizes so that they're smaller. We can make sure that there's plenty of space in between them. So any of those types of things that we can do, we are continuing with. The, let me tell you where we're, where, we had a big discussion yesterday about the water park. The swimming registration was supposed to start this coming Monday. Our priority, of course, is swimming lessons. What we've, what we have moved the schedule to, we've determined that if we can open the pool by the first of July, then it's still worth getting open. That still gives us probably a good six or eight weeks that we can stay open with the pool. The challenges with all of that is you've got lifeguard training that has to be done. You're keeping these kids that are holding their, you know, they're not going out getting other work, but yet we keep kicking the can down the road. And so it's a struggle to keep, to keep a staff and to, hey, we're gonna, we're going to keep you and here's your summer job, but it's only going to last for six weeks. So, but we've got a pool of kids that we think are going to be able to help us do that. Again, we need a couple of weeks lead time. We can't just open the gate and say, let's go. We've got to get people in place and people trained. So that's the challenge with that. But we've determined that if we can at least open by July first. We've moved the swimming registration back to June. I think it's June third and fourth. What's it say on there? Yeah, June third and fourth is now the new swimming legis, registration. We, all we've done is done away with our preseason sessions and moved the other sessions back. We're limiting the number of kids that are in those sessions and spreading them out again, so we can maintain proper distancing, putting sufficient time between them so that the group that's leaving and the groups that's coming has plenty of time to, to clear out and get things sanitized before a new group comes in. These are just some surface. We got a lot of details to these, but I won't bore you with all of it. But those are just some of the adjustments that we're making in order to try to get some of these things open. Now, I meet with, virtually with fifty-six different parks and rec directors throughout the state once a week to discuss these things. And really, it's just to collaborate, get ideas. Again, all of them are not going to be under the same circumstances as us. A lot of the talk now has been the recreation centers and what they're doing with those. So we're staying in touch just to keep a, keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on around the state and how people are dealing with various issues. And just to be able to comply with the governor's requests and the CDC requirements. Let me see. Any que, throw out some question. Well, let me cover one, a couple of other things and Stacy can cover some Fiesta Days things as well. I know we're, we're just like, we're getting a lot of questions, a lot of phone calls on Fiesta Days. You see a lot of, a lot of communities now are canceling their festivities, either all or partial. We're, we're hanging on as long as we possibly can. You know, I have my personal feelings. I, we love to have Fiesta Days. I have a hard time seeing how that's going to happen if, unless some drastic things change in order for us to, in order for us to be able to meet the requirements for some of those bigger events. But we can, you know, we can have, I know the committee discussed in, in depth yesterday about what events we can and can't have, just based on the, the regulations and guidelines that we have before us, even if we change to yellow or go to green. You know, what restrictions are in place and what we can and can't do. And they've, they've done a good job of identifying a lot of the things that we, that we're not going to be able to do. And then some of the other things that we possibly could do with some, some modifications to have some sort of a celebration. I did, we did get a letter from the county health department. They have been, they haven't been very active, but we did get a letter from them this last week. Basically now stepping up and saying, yeah, you're not going to be able to open your pool. You can open a pool, but you can have one person in each lane for lap swim and that's all. So we could open up our pool for six people, which we're not going to do. But they at least have made a statement now and said at least, at least till the fifteenth. That's what, that's their guideline that they're going with. Okay, I can go on and on. There's a lot of stuff here. Please ask any questions, comments. It's all, it's there. If you need more details on what we're trying to do or have recommendations for us.
Hey Dale, it's Brandon.
Yes, sir.
What if you have an accelerated team that wants to rent your fields? What are you guys doing with that? Baseball or softball?
Yeah, we are not, if, if we're not able to have our programs on them, we're certainly not allowing them to have theirs. So right now, we're not renting out any of the facility. In fact, any of our buildings and facilities, we are not renting at the moment. Including, including pavilions. Now the pavilions are open. They're all posted with signs. We didn't wrap them up like we did the playgrounds, but we are not, we are not doing rentals. Because there's, we just can't, we can't meet the guidelines of having twenty people or less by having somebody rent pavilions. So we've left all of those rentals.
In the, in the guideline, there are, it clearly calls out no courts in this orange category. So whether, whether it was a city-sponsored ballgame or somebody else using it for a rental, it felt like that would be counter to that guidance. And, and we as the host agency, we as the host jurisdiction would be in violation of, of that directive.
Wow, there's a lot of stuff there. Nobody has anything else to say?
Well, I think people can go on and see any particular thing that's important to them. I mean, if you want to stay here all night and go through each one, go for it, but I think.
No, that's not, that's not my preference, Mayor, and you know that.
I know it isn't. I know it isn't, but.
I just kind of hit, I just kind of hit. I, I just kind of hit what I thought were the hot buttons at the moment.
Right. And that, and everybody has a different one. And so as, if you've got an issue, you can go on and check that out. If you have questions, feel free to call the rec department or call anybody here in the city. We can help get you the answers to all those items. But I think people don't realize that, yeah, this is not normal.
No.
So. All right, we appreciate that, Dale. Anything else? Anybody else have any other questions, comments on it?
I have a question. If someone can just clarify, and it's not for Dale, probably for Seth or anyone else. I just had someone email me asking me to explain what RDA and CDA actual, actually stand for and what they mean.
Take it away, Seth. Your moment to shine.
I think we let K E N T take that one.
Those are all under the realm of redevelopment agencies, and the city council access redevelopment agents board. And over the last, since I've been here 29 years, I have, each time the legislature changes the rules on how RDAs function, they get a new acronym. It began as being RDA, meaning redevelopment agency, and then they created RDA, redevelopment areas. And then as each area, or each time there's a new legislation, they have a new acronym. It went from RDA to EDA to CDA, and now it's CRA. But it's, I think it's the way the legislature lets all of us know that there are different rules for each, when, when an area, an area is set up, is set up under a certain set of rules, and that area is, has to run under those rules. So in ours, over the last 29 years, we've had RDAs, CDAs, EDAs, and the latest one is CRAs. And that's why you see those different names.
Thank you, K E N T.
Oh geez. Don't start that, or Brandon, he doesn't know how to spell, so we'll be in trouble.
Real funny, Mayor. I, I make a motion that we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scholes. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you for everyone, and hopefully we don't have to do this again.